Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order a regular city council meeting for Monday, July 10th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is called our opening ceremony, which will consist of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members who have given their lives for our country. If everyone would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Miller, if you take your role, please.
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Protemdold.
Present.
Councilmember Karafotis.
Here.
Councilmember Squires.
Here.
Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
Mayor, you do have a quorum with all seven members present.
Thank you. Item four, the approval of the agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Discussion from table, from general public. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, we have some recognitions today. And Chief Harmon, or former Chief Harmon. So Chief Kathy Harmon. Kathy is the first of two retirements being recognized tonight. Fire Chief Kathy Harmon started her fire service career with the city of Detroit in 1984. It was in 1992 when she was hired here in Garden City. In 2003, Kathy was promoted to Lieutenant, and then during a time of transition, Kathy served as the interim fire chief in the fall of 2010. Kathy was then promoted to full-time fire chief in December of 2010, where she also served as the city's emergency manager, where she handled all weather-related emergencies, reporting back to the director of Homeland Security in Wayne County. And we have a plaque for you. "In recognition of the retirement of Catherine Harmon, Fire Chief, November 14th, 1992, June 30th, 2023, you have served the city of Garden City, Michigan with honor and distinction for over 30 years. Your career has been dedicated to leading with compassion as you went above and beyond for the citizens of the city for the past 13 years as the fire chief. The city council of Garden City thanks you for your commitment to the community and wishes you the best of luck in your retirement." Chief, congratulations.
Okay, I have nothing prepared, so I'm just gonna wing it for y'all. Mayor and council, current and former, I want to thank you for your support. It's been a long career, 40 years total, and it's been one full of rewards and full of some profound and extreme sadness and tragedy. I've been your fire chief for 13 years. I know every single one of you. I worked on some of your campaigns, the union did, did what we could to do what was best for the city. It's been my honor, my privilege, and my pleasure to serve. It's kind of a strange transition, but I've kind of fallen into this pattern of sleep that I have not experienced in, I can't tell you how long. And Chief Keane and I were talking about transitioning from 24-hour shift work to 40-hour, it's not 40 hours, by the way. Mrs. Keane, are you ready for this? Ask Mrs. Harmon. But I wanted to thank you, and I wanted, some of you are still here on the board, that we're here during the recession. We can't forget what that did to us. And we can't forget, like you did, Councilmember Earl, when you recognized Pat McCarge for all the decisions that the council and the mayors made during that time, along with the department heads and the employees. We dug deep. There were people that lost their jobs. We did what we could do to keep people from losing their jobs, still stay solvent. And we need to remember that history because it's gonna happen again. It's cyclic. We do go into recessions. And I really appreciated those words that you shared. It really meant a lot as a department head, looking at having to go to the man who's our chief now and say, "You got laid off." How do you lay off firefighters when you're already shorthanded? You know? So I was very happy that we made it through it. We stayed out of receivership, and I'm very grateful for that. I gotta acknowledge Marty, she knows me probably longer than anybody. She's been through the lieutenant phase, the interim chief, the holy, what did I do? When I got the chief's job, through some of the trials and tribulations that have happened over the years, most of my close friends and family are here. They know what a lot of it was like. Losing my mother kind of was hard. But the day after I retired, I had my first great nephew, Salvatore Antonio Harmon. He was supposed to be born the day I retired. I also would like to thank Maran Silvers, my administrative assistant extraordinaire. They knew I didn't want to party. I know, kind of wanted to kind of go out under the radar, but you know, it was kind of cool. If you want to do it again, I'm up for it. But Maran did a really fantastic job. We got donations, so no city money was used in the formation of my send-off. I appreciated it, that you did such a fantastic job. Your family came up, your daughter, all the stuff the guys did behind my back. The good things. I think I thanked everybody. I don't want to take up too much time because I know it's a very exciting night. I thank you for believing in me, trusting me, your faith in me. I'm still around. I am still getting phone calls, by the way. So, yeah. And I direct them to the right people, and I have your phone numbers. All right, well, thank y'all very much. I really appreciate the support over the years, and it's really great to be able to wake up and think, "I don't have to go to work." I've slipped soreness out of my body that's been there for 40 years. It's amazing. So, as she said, I've had a smile on my face more now than I have probably in the 20 years we've been together. So I want to acknowledge my brother, my sister-in-law, and my nephew, and also retired Deputy Chief Frost. He was with me on my first day, and on my last day, we got a picture. Retired Deputy Chief Fire Marshal. Mike Massey, he's also here, and our Civil Service Commissioner, Sammy Morrison. So thank you, Mayor and Council. You got my number.
Stay right here, I think we have something.
Good evening, everybody. Nick Schroeder, Lieutenant with the Fire Department. Firehouse tradition is to get a ceremonial axe for everybody when they retire. Chief, we want to present this to you on behalf of the Garden City Firefighters Union Local 1911, and wish you a very happy retirement. Enjoy it.
That's awesome. The axe has been a long-term tradition. It really means a lot because it comes from the International Association of Firefighters. I'm a very proud, long-term member. Kind of kicked me out when they retired me when I got the chief's job, but I'm still connected with them, the international chiefs, and many, many other organizations. So you'll be seeing me in the future, but right now, I'm just hitting the rest word.
Thank you, Chief. You will be missed. We also, we also have another retirement. Personnel Director Martha Griggs. So now, now I would like to recognize the retirement of Martha Griggs. Martha started with the city of Garden City as the executive assistant to the fire chief in 2007. This was the fire chief before Kathy, which I believe was Mr. Massey. In 2011... Bill Forbush, sorry. In 2011, Martha became the building manager of the Maplewood Center and worked in the Family Resources Center of the city, teaching financial literacy classes for people in need of assistance. In 2015, Martha became the Assistant Human Resources Director and Executive Assistant to the mayor and city manager. And finally, in 2018, Martha was appointed to be the Director of Human Resources for the city. As the HR Director, Martha helped with reorganization of the union contracts, moved to all HR operations and processes to all electronic services, and oversaw the transition of healthcare programs to more cost-effective plans for the city and participants. "In recognition of the retirement of Martha Griggs, Director of Human Resources, October 8th, 2007, to June 30th, 2023, thank you for more than 15 years of service and dedication to the city of Garden City, Michigan. Your enthusiasm, commitment, and hard work in serving the city's staff and retirees made you an integral part of the efficient running of the city. The city council of Garden City thanks you for your commitment to the city and wishes you the best of luck in your retirement."
I will just say thank you from Mayor and Council. I appreciate it. And on to the next chapter.
Okay, and now, we have the swearing-in of Randy Keane. Before I give it over to the city clerk, Randy was raised in the city of Garden City and graduated from Garden City High School. He is also a graduate of Sienna Heights University. Randy joined the Garden City Fire Department in July of 2006 as a firefighter paramedic. In 2014, Randy was promoted to Lieutenant. After serving in that capacity, he was promoted to Captain in 2019. Tonight, Randy is being sworn in as the next fire chief of Garden City. Joining Randy tonight are his wife, Leann, his three boys, Nick, Jack, and Lucas, along with other family members. His wife, Leann, will be pinning his badge on tonight. Mr. Miller.
Go raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Randall Keane.
Aye, Randall Keane.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
As the fire chief.
As the fire chief.
For the city of Garden City Fire Department.
For the city of Garden City Fire Department.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To perform my duties.
To perform my duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To serve the citizens of the city of Garden City.
To serve the citizens of the city of Garden City.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
To serve the community.
To serve the community.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
And to uphold.
And to uphold.
The laws and constitutions.
The laws and constitutions.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The state of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
And the city of Garden City.
And the city of Garden City.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chief Keane, Keane, for your first duty as the new fire chief of the city of Garden City. I'd like to take, like you to take a moment, mention a few things about your first promotion in the fire department, the promotion of Dan Nall to fire captain.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. All right, because I was promoted, obviously, there's a, there's an opening now in the captain ranks. So tonight, we're gonna promote Dan Nall to the rank of fire captain. Dan has been a proud member of the Garden City Fire Department since 1993. He was promoted to pump operator slash engineer in 2002, and then he was promoted to lieutenant in 2012. He's been riding the rescue in lieutenant since 2012 for the last 11 years, so it's been, I know, a little bit of a grind for him. So prior to starting in Garden City, he was, he obtained some training and some schooling through Plymouth Fire Department and then at Schoolcraft College. He also served on the Wayne County, Western Wayne USR team since its inception, since 2005 until this past year, so a long run. And then he also attended Eastern Michigan University and did Staff of Command and got his, his degree in command leadership there. He resides in Plymouth, and tonight, Dan will be, have his badge pinned by Debbie Ryan. Come on up, Dan.
Aye, Daniel Nall.
Aye, Daniel Nall.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
To the rank of captain.
To the rank of captain.
For the Garden City Fire Department.
For the Garden City Fire Department.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To perform my duties.
To perform my duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To serve the citizens of the city of Garden City.
To serve the citizens of, the community of the citizens of Garden City.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
To serve my commanding officers.
To serve my commanding officers.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
And to uphold.
And to uphold.
The laws and constitutions.
The laws and constitutions.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The state of Michigan.
The state of Michigan.
And the city of Garden City.
And the city of Garden City.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, at this time, we'll take a couple-minute recess, and for those that are going to celebrate. Okay, we're back in session. Item number six, there's no state or county officials here. We have no presentations. Jackie Perry, Ms. Jackie Perry Door, for community events.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Just reminding everybody, the second music in the park is Thursday, the 20th of July. The band this time is Weekend Comeback. They're new to us. We hope they're wonderful. They're going to be playing oldies and Motown-type era music. The vendors, the food, the beverages, all of that stuff will be there, starting at 4:00. The music starts at 6:30, and the whole thing's over at 9:00. So come early, stay a long time, and have a great time. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a communication. I'd like to take a moment to mention a tragedy our city is experiencing right now. On July 4th, a child of one of our own experienced a traumatic accident. While on a family vacation near Louisville, Kentucky, Garden City Police Chief Tim Gibbons' 17-year-old son, Owen, struck his head underwater while swimming. This caused a traumatic neck and spine injury. Owen was pulled from the water quickly and lifelighted to the University of Louisville Hospital. Owen received treatment and underwent surgery to try to repair and minimize the damage to his spine. Presently, Owen does not have control of his limbs, and there is a possibility that this will be a permanent condition. Owen is facing a long battle, first to survive, then to rehabilitate. Owen is currently at the University of Louisville Hospital, but is still not stable enough to transfer to the University of Michigan. Owen Gibbons is an incoming junior at Divine Child High School and is a multi-sport athlete who actively participates in football, baseball, and wrestling. Owen plays sports with his brother and best friend, Liam, who is a sophomore and is an older brother to younger sister, Maeve. In this trying time, please keep Tim Gibbons and his family in your thoughts and prayers, offering support and encouragement whenever you can. It is during moments like these that the power of unity and collective goodwill shines through. Together, we can provide strength and solace to both Owen and his family, aiding in his journey towards recovery. This is a quote from Tim. "One light that has shone through this dark time is the love and support of our family, friends, and the communities we belong to. Thank you for your love and support. It means everything to us right now. We love all of you. You are our port in the storm. God bless all of you. Please, God, bless and heal my son." Please continue to pray for Owen. End of quote. Presently, city staff are working on activities to support the young family. Please keep an eye out for where you may be able to support the Gibbons family as they enter unimaginable times. Police Department Executive Assistant Cindy Montroy will be heading up any city-related activities. activities. She can be reached at cindym@gardencitymi.org or 734-793-1702. Again, that's cindym@gardencitymi.org or 734-793-1702. Owen Strong. Thank you, everyone, for your support now and in the future. We have no public hearings. Item 11 is the consent agenda. Councilmember Witt. Support from Councilmember Carefotis. Any comments from table? From general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Onto the action items. Item number one is the Parks and Recreation Five-Year Master Plan Update. Director Kim O'Farrell, if you'd like to come up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you see in your package tonight, I am just requesting funding to update the five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan. A little history with the plan, it was developed by McKenna. That was the group that previously did it in 2018. Upon my arrival, that was one of the first things I had asked for is the master plan. Come to find out, it is set to expire in February of '24, so we do not have much time. The timeline was given to all of you in my packet and proposal, requesting the funds of $17,500 to ask McKenna to get our master plan up to par. And most of you all know that the master plan is pretty, it's a necessity to get the local and state funding grants, and I know the city's been fortunate with receiving a lot of those dollars. So we obviously want to continue with those dollars to improve our parks and everything that deals with Parks and Rec, because it's, things are expensive. So just request for that for this evening. Any questions?
Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Earl.
I move to approve and accept McKenna to update Parks and Recreation Master Plan in the amount of $17,500.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Carefotis. Further comment from table? From general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Item two, Rotary Park Pavilion Project. O'Farrell.
Good evening again. A bid went out for Rotary Park Pavilion. Again, this was done, I think, right before I arrived, and Mr. Donnie did a great job putting that together. He did solicit the bids, and we are asking the council and the mayor to release the funds of $18,000, and that is for the lowest and best bid. I did look through things. Everything looked pretty solid in the bid sheet. Again, the spread wasn't too far apart, 25, 22, and 18. Those are all good, solid bids coming in. And just to let the council know, this is a, the Wayne County Recreation Millage that was given to the city in the amount of $17,000, so we will be releasing, using those funds for this project. Also, in the five-year preliminary capital improvement plan, I'm sure all of you have that, this is one of those projects that is listed in that plan, so we're just asking to go ahead and award that bid for the improvement at Rotary Park, the pavilion.
This is, and just for refresh council's memory, this was what Commissioner Kenezak had talked about. For this year, we're getting that split allocation. We're going forward, it's going to be all three communities getting one bid. So next year, we won't get any of this allocation, and the following year, I believe, it'll be somewhere around $80,000 that we'll get, and the other two will not get anything. So that's where that comes from. Councilmember Squires.
I move to approve and accept CHI to update Rotary Park Pavilion in the amount of $18,000.
Support.
Support from Mayor Protem Dole. Further comments from table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Okay, item three is a zero-turn mower purchase. Mr. Owen, DPW Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for the purchase of an X-Mark Zero-Turn Mower from Wying Guards of Livonia, Michigan. This will be purchased through a state contract, which is over $4,200 savings. We do cut a lot of grass, maintaining our buildings, parks, islands, ordinance cuts. This would be a great addition to our fleet.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynch.
I move to approve the purchase of an X-Mark Zero-Turn Mower from Wying Guards of Livonia, Michigan, under state contract for $10,959.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Witt. Further discussion from table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Carefotis.
Mr., could you say that one more time about the state rebate?
Through state contract, the savings is over $4,200.
So normally, it would be $14,000 or something?
Yeah, closer to $15,000.
And do we normally buy all our equipment from Wying Guards?
Since they have the state contract.
Okay. Do other places in our area have that, or no?
I think Wayne Lawn Garden, but we wanted to pursue getting an X-Mark mower, and they stocked them, so we just went to Wying Guards.
Okay. That's all I had.
Thank you. Any other comments? General public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four is the 2023 Right of First Refusal NSP Purchase. Mr. Miller.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight before us is the NSP Purchase. That's a neighborhood stabilization program that is here where the city has the right to purchase property from the county prior to it going to a general open bid of the public. And these are tax-foreclosed properties, and it's done yearly. Last year, though, we did not do any, because of COVID, it was kind of delayed, shall we say, so there were no evictions or anything during that time. This year, we did get a list of five properties, commercial property, a vacant lot, and three homes. Part of our process is that we review each of the structures. If they're occupied, we do not exercise the option. They, that is done by a separate entity not involving the city. This is the only one that kind of met our criteria, a vacant structure. It's dilapidated, causing problems for the neighbors, those kinds of things, and it's our opportunity to actually purchase a property. And then, if you can recall, we have a program set up with HP Snap and a contract where, once we receive the property, we'll have to go through the process to sell the property then to HP Snap. Also, HP Snap will take the property and do a full renovation on the property. If you happen to go by BAC, you will see, if you did go by, kind of a mess with a lot of trees and overgrowth. There's also a significant addition was put on the structure, but luckily for us at least, and for HP Snap going forward, the addition did have most of the inspections, footing, foundation, those kinds of things. So it's structurally sound, but the interior is in poor condition also. So we're looking forward to at least moving forward with this one property, and we have to, again, purchase it from Wayne County. Once we receive the deed, then we'll start the process to sell the property to HP Snap. But until that time, I do need your approval to at least start the purchasing process. In the entire tax foreclosure process, I just want to let you know and everyone else that at any moment, the homeowner has the right to redeem it up until the last minute. So we're, of course, we're exercising our right. If no one does redeem it, then we will be able to get the property. So, thank you.
Motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I move to approve the purchase of 29940 BAC from Wayne County in the amount not to exceed $55,505.10.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Further comment from table?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Mayor Protem Dole.
Once we sell the house to HP Snap and they renovate it, is, are they required to sell the house, or can they rent it?
They're required to sell the home, and it also has to be to an owner occupied. It can't be sold to a landlord.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Carefotis.
You said at any minute, the homeowner, but you meant property owner, because there's no one living in the house currently.
Correct, correct.
Okay. And do we buy that, do we sell that as a profit to them, or it's just what we paid for it?
Correct. We, in the law, the state legislature deemed that the cities cannot make any money on it, that we have to, we have to enter into a contract with a company that will renovate it, and they will make the profit. Part of the positive portion of this, though, is that it will be a house that will be back on the tax rolls, because we haven't had taxes in more than three years on the property, and we then can control that it won't be sold to a landlord, and it will be renovated properly with all the permits pulled. So our program is set. Unfortunately, we can't make the money. I would love to be able to do that, but we try to make sure that the renovation is done to code plus, meaning that they can't buy the cheapest doors, they can't buy the cheapest siding. Everything is done to a good, sturdy quality, something that we would all have in our own homes.
This is the same company we've used for the last couple of years, right?
Yes.
They renovated that house on Helen, and it looks unbelievable.
They do a fantastic job.
It looks great. So I think that's a great thing for the neighborhood.
Any other comments?
Yeah, it's a wonderful program. I know we've had several of them in the past, and they do do a beautiful, excuse me, a beautiful job. And as the clerk said, it brings in tax revenue after it's sold, and it's only sold to homeowners, somebody that's going to live in it, which is important. Thank you.
Any other comments from the general public? Ms. Perry Door.
I also believe that they have a program, Snap does, that it's middle-to-low-income people that are allowed to purchase that home, which they renovate above and beyond. So a millionaire can't come in and scoop it up for his kids. It's for the community to thrive as well as those people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hunt.
Mr. Miller, when we're buying from Wayne County, is that not just the taxes that are due on them?
Yes, the, we're purchasing it for the back taxes. And there's also liens, ordinance enforcements, all of that is what we're purchasing.
I was just wondering, 55 sounds like an awful lot for taxes.
Anything the property owner owned on it, we have, anything the property owner owned on it, they all get reimbursed, so that's where the money comes from.
Also, a mortgage could be held.
A mortgage, okay. I just thought it was a tax. I'm like, that was a lot of taxes for three. Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Item five. Public Service Credit Union Designation of Depository and Remote Payment Acceptance. Mr. Marciniac.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back in June, I was approached by Public Service Credit Union, which is a credit union down here in the old Kroger Plaza. They wanted to do some, had an interesting proposal. In the past, we had accepted remote payments at various places. Some people who have been here long enough will talk about paying their taxes at a drugstore in town. So they, they're going to start a program to, in order to receive our current water and tax payments, they have to be the current ones at the credit union. In order to do so, we would have to open an account at the credit union. Currently, they are not on our list of banks or financial institutions that we do business with. So before you tonight is a resolution to include them as such, as well as accepting remote deposits, or remote payments for the water and, water and tax bills. And how this would work is, obviously, we set up a regular account. Someone comes in, they pay it, they stamp it, pay, give them a return receipt that, with a stamped payment, and then they will directly put those funds into our account at Public Service Credit Union. We still will maintain our current bank accounts with our current financial institution, but occasionally, we will sweep the money from those accounts and put them back into the city fund. So it would allow our customers, one, who bank at, who already bank at Public Service Credit Union, to not have to do several things. They can take care of all their business at the Garden City branch, and the Garden City branch only, as well as they have Saturday hours and things like that. So it's another opportunity, another way to get the current water and tax bills paid on the city. Any questions? And I thank you for your time.
Mayor.
Councilmember Carefotis.
Is there an additional fee to pay there?
No, there is not.
What does the credit union get out of it?
The only thing the credit union I could foresee that they get out of it is a business, opportunity to, for more people to do business with. You know, they're working to develop community relations throughout Garden City.
Is it only members of the credit union that can make the payment?
No, it's not for only members. So anybody can come into the, with their, with their water bill, any resident or water customer can pay there. It's not just for the current credit union members.
Council, have any other questions? Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor.
Mayor Protem Dole.
I move to approve the resolution of Public Service Credit Union as a depository and associated signatories, including remote payment of current water and tax payments by residents at the Garden City branch.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Carefotis. Further comment from table? From the general public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item six, managerial audit. Mr. Dackery.
All right, thank you, Mayor. This is a topic we've been discussing for some time. Based in the charter, it says that the city should, every five years, do a managerial audit, which is basically looking at some operations of a department, the purpose of trying to have better, improved operations. The council, last time, discussed it, of going to the mutual aid, auto aid runs discussion, do an evaluation after the council received a report regarding numbers of how many times our services leave the city as opposed to coming in. Council asked to, you know, possibly have that done as an audit, operational audit. Before you is a proposal from Plant Moran, who does our financial audits. They have a separate division that also does managerial audits. As you see, it is actually requesting for outlined projects that will not exceed $10,000 by our purchasing policy. This is something that doesn't normally have to come to the council, but for discussion to move forward, I'd rather have the council discuss it one more time or choose another project. Put it up to the council.
Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Squires.
I move to approve an agreement with Plant Moran Consulting Firm to perform a managerial audit of the fire department's mutual aid and auto aid programs.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Further discussion from table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Carefotis.
Is Plant Moran here to answer questions?
No, they are not. I don't.
They weren't at the workshop that we brought this up either.
What's that?
They weren't at the workshop when we brought this up either.
Okay.
And I wasn't there. That was when I left early. So I just had some questions, like, have they done one on the fire department before, where it's mutual aid?
Well, I think, as you see, I couldn't answer for that, but as you see, what their project approach is, is just looking at the statistical review, the five-year runs, coming and going, and making recommendations that feel processes to be improved for the mutual aid. So, you know, kind of unlock, I think, the building department request, which got really into processes. into processes of how they do everything. This is much more, and that's why it's a lower cost, it's more of a statistical analysis because we're understanding maybe some of the information that was given to us about the last mutual aid and auto aid was not maybe exactly correct because as we all noticed, we left the city a lot more than, than anybody came to us and it should be somewhat balanced. So I don't, I don't know if this is a, I don't think this is a really deep audit.
It doesn't seem like it. It says it's all over the phone and all the information comes from you anyway.
All it's going from the fire department, it ain't coming from me.
But it says you're the one in charge of it and that information comes from you.
Just the contact.
And what is the end to this? I mean, we're not going to leave the mutual aid agreement.
No, but if my people tell us what's more, what would be a better, a better system? If, if we're going, if we're going to Inkster 100 times more than they're coming to us?
We're still not leaving the agreement, so what would change?
But there might be ways to, to make it better for, for our residents.
I agree.
So.
But my question is, did we find out about that contract if we can even change it? Regardless of what we do with this, before we even move forward, did we find out if we can even do anything to that contract and change it?
Mutual aid agreement is just between the communities themselves. There is no, there's no permanent stuck thing that you're, you're forever.
Right, but it's city, state, federal, there's lots of community.
Yeah, but this is a, this, I don't, I don't.
It's a contract, so my question is, can we change the contract regardless of what it says?
I would, I would believe we can, but that could be a question that could be asked because we have an agreement that we go to Inkster, just using Inkster as an example, they have basic life, we have advanced life. So when we go down to Inkster, we're bringing advanced wagon. If we're out of the town and they had come in here, they're bringing less, less services. So that's a question of, I think I take your point of, what do we do? I think we figure out if this is useful to the city or not. If our city is spending all of our resources to go to other cities and then when we get a call here, we're bringing in someone from somewhere else. Westland has several stations, we have one. We spend a lot of time going to Westland compared to Westland coming to us. Why are the big dogs getting our services as opposed to us getting the service?
Because we need their services. We have to have help from someone else because we can't do it alone.
Only during the, the fire, the largest fire issues. But we're going to them to take care of their four stations and leaving our one station for waiting for someone to come back. I think, to me, that certainly warrants a question rather than just saying, this is what we've done for all these years. Is it a good situation that we're stuck in at this point?
That's why I'm asking if we've looked into that contract before we just say we're going to do an audit on it. Because if it's something that we can't change, why would we spend $10,000?
You can always change any contract, I would say. This is, nothing is permanent that's stuck forever. No.
We haven't found that out. We haven't looked at that contract or found anything.
I would not believe that there's a permanent contract that we must service.
Yeah, I'm sure it's not an endless contract, but I'm just asking if we've looked into the contract for it to see exactly what we can change.
I think the question was, what brought to the council was 96 calls going out of town, 4% of the calls coming into town. I think we have to look at the numbers. Is that correct? I was told it was not correct information that was given to us. So before we're even canceling a contract, the question is, what are the numbers that we're even discussing at this point? So the idea of this report is, where are we? What are the exact numbers? Is it a 50-50 or is it extreme, 96 to 4? I think the information will decide what we're going to do for the future.
I have a question.
Do you have to investigate prior to making any decisions?
I know, I can still ask questions why we haven't looked into the contract before we spent $10,000. If we look into a contract and say, well, look, we could get out of this or we could change this, maybe we don't need to spend the $10,000 or maybe we're going to find out this contract can't change for three years or this contract changes and Garden City gets no help if we don't give any help. So again, finding out before we do this is what I'm asking.
We are very self-sufficient ourselves. It's when there's a five-alarm fire, having other communities come in with extra trucks. That's the useful part. It's not necessarily extra ambulance work or even regular garage fires in our, our city. That's, and I think that report is going to come out there once again. How many times are we helping compared to how many times they're coming to help us? But we're, we're clearly self-sufficient to take care of our own city.
We're already short-staffed. I don't believe we're self-sufficient without help.
Oh, that's, I would not say that. No, I disagree.
Mayor Protondol.
My question is, just this, the data that they're going to be looking at, isn't that available to us already?
To a point.
So if you remember when this, when I brought this up at the budget hearing, the issue was when we got the data, it was so skewed and we all, everybody there said, maybe we should have Plant Moran look at this. And the issue was 96% of the time, we were in other cities and 4% of the time, they were in Garden City. So upon speaking with the new chief, the now-new chief, you know, this is, this could be a good tool to help him see where they're at, see where their strengths are, see if they need help in certain areas. It's not necessarily, has anything to do with canceling a contract or altering a contract, but the numbers were so far off from what they probably really are that this was something that Plant Moran could nail for us relatively easily.
That's what I was asking, does Plant Moran do this for fire departments, for mutual aid?
They, they do.
I mean, when we talked to them about the building department, they had never done a building department before.
No, but they do make, it's a, it's an audit. It's a basic overall statistical audit. I don't think they're getting into the weeds very deep in the, in this situation here. Information is there. I think it's more valid if we have an outside organization looking at the information itself than the city just coming back to say, we're good because the information you already received was from city staff.
Well, this says it's only going to be received from city staff. It says it's going to be in-house information only.
As you mentioned, the new, the new chief had some concerns of the information that was put together and it came off our computer systems through HEMs and some other areas. This is not just, somebody has a notebook and is just saying, here's three. There is more deeper information that can be analyzed. So it's, when we say it's coming from the city, it's not literally us just writing it up. It's the actual mutual aid numbers that somehow didn't make it correctly back to the council for review. So besides this, as we're talking about managerial audit, the council has to decide on some project to do a managerial audit. So less than $10,000 on a managerial audit is probably, operational audit is actually probably not a high dollar. But if we don't do this one, then the council would have to discuss coming up with another project, but either way, it's going to be probably in that range. We're probably not going to get much of an audit in-house for, for three to four or five grand. There's going to be a cost to this if we're going to follow through on this.
Yeah, I mean, the last, the last managerial audit, how, 10, 10 or 13 years ago, we spent $13,000? I mean, that was.
Twenty-five, wasn't it, the, the original? Well, the last, for the building department, of course, the bids were $40,000, but we, we said no to that.
But that was 13 years ago that we spent. Okay.
So just, it's really this question, I guess, is up to the council. Is this the audit that you want to move forward on or is there something else the council would like to discuss to, to audit, something else, operational?
Well, I'm, I'm still just, I'm not exactly clear. I know the question was asked, what is the end result? What, what are we looking at to get out of this audit? Because it does appear on the surface that it's either going to be that we remain in mutual aid or we opt out.
It could, no, because depending on the stats that we actually get, it could give our new chief some more information to improve this area over this area. It could, could help, you know, we're good at this, but we need more help with this. It's going to give out some more, I guess, more accurate numbers as to, again, how many times do we leave the city and leave it for another city to, to commit?
Right, but that's going back to mutual aid.
Right. It's not going to change that mutual aid.
Plus it breaks down fire versus EMS, it breaks down everything, all the different types of runs.
I guess I'm just not clear how it's going to help, how it will help the fire department decide that this area needs improvement.
Knowing how much runs they go and what are EMS, which are fire, that helps a lot. I mean, you know, and, and so that's, that was the problem. When we saw the, the data, if you remember how skewed it was, we were all kind of taken aback at, at the numbers. So that's why we asked for them to tell us if they could do it.
Yeah, I understand the data was, but that, I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. You're saying that this, this audit's going to come back and it's going to, it'll help the new chief say, hey, you know what, we need to improve this area of what we're doing in the department. I'm not understanding how this audit is going to help that when they're looking mainly at our mutual aid numbers.
Well, I believe they're going to look at.
A whole lot more than that.
They're looking at all the numbers, all the runs, all the, how many, how many fires, how many times were, were put out fires in the city and outside?
I know, but if you're just looking at numbers, how is that going to help?
Well, could help.
I'm, I'm just, I'm totally missing that. I'm, I'm sorry.
Any statistics I think the council receives about our operations is useful to decide is.
To some degree, but I think, I think mainly it's, we're, we're looking at, how many times are we going into Inkster? How many times are they coming here or Westland? I do have another question, though. So the mutual aid contracts, could we opt out of just one city or is it all or nothing?
I think it's all or nothing.
I think that's all.
It's all or nothing.
But I'm not positive.
I, it's up, it's up to the.
Those are the questions we'd want answers to.
It's up to the council to discuss. I would, I would advise that in a situation of the numbers that we saw, if they weren't correct, then we should know what our numbers are. If they were correct, it's, I'm not advocating opting out, but I think there's a conversation that needs to be had by these communities to say, we're not the ones that are going out 96 out of 100 times to every other city and they come to us very few times. I, I think that's good information for us as overall because we, as any government and any company, we've been doing it this way, just because we've been doing it this way. I think that's a conversation we have. If it's that skewed, if it's 50-50, we're good. I think we're all good, but we have to have that information done properly and report something like this in a direction of the charter, saying you have to put operational reports together. But as I said, if there's another department that you guys want to go a different direction with, then we can discuss that tonight.
I think considering the size of Garden City compared to the size of Westland and Inkster and the other communities, there's no way it's going to come back 50-50. We know that right off the bat. We're, we're a lot smaller. They're not coming here to help us as much as we're going out there.
Right, Westland's four times larger than we are. Of course, we're going to help them more than they help us.
Which begs the question of their multimillion-dollar budgets well beyond the city, does that make sense for our services to be leaving our city and then having someone come in the back end to help us when we're here?
I think it'll be closer to 50-50 than you'd expect.
Well, I think it goes back to the end result of this, I, that is just going to be basically what we do with mutual aid. And I kind of feel that this is just kind of a perfunctory thing at this point to get the managerial audit out of the way. I personally would like to table this until we can talk to Plant Moran and get those questions answered for sure. I know it's just $10,000 in the grand scheme of thing. It's not 40 like the building department was, but before we decide that this is where we're going to focus our audit, I think that Plant Moran should be here to answer questions.
Also, also, I think that this is a very important thing to do regardless of whether we have the managerial audit or not. Spending, like you said, $10,000, you didn't have to come to us. We could have just done this to do it.
Correct.
Because we need it and then focus the managerial audit on something else that really needs it, that's more detailed.
Mm-hmm.
Like you said, if this is something that important, we should be doing it anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Well, right now, the motion on table, on the floor is to go with the, this managerial audit, so.
Isn't it our job to call if we've got questions? Can't we call Plant Moran if we have questions and ask them if they come up?
We're asking to have them come speak to us.
No, I know that, I know that.
We're also supposed to have discussion during the meeting, so that's why we're discussing it now.
Right. Well, right now, the motion, the motion is to move forward with this. If the maker and the supporter want to table it, then we can do that. Otherwise, we're going to vote on moving forward with it. So.
Table an awful lot of stuff, but I will revise to table it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lynch?
I'll hold my motion. One second.
Okay. All right, I guess we'll have to, we have to vote on it.
Yeah.
All in favor of tabling it?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
For a future meeting, not the next meeting for sure, just.
Wait until you get ahold of them again.
Yep, yes.
All right, table that and, or I have to have a workshop or something. Okay, other business, item 12. First, we need to have a motion to remove the DDA budget from, from being tabled.
Mayor.
Councilmember Earl.
I move to remove the, the discussion on the budget from the table.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Any discussion on that from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven zero. Okay, other business, fiscal year 2023, '24, general appropriations and tax levy ordinance from DDA. Councilmember Earl.
I move to adopt the fiscal year 2023, 2024, general appropriations and tax levy ordinance for the Downtown Development Authority.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Any further comments from the table?
Yes, Mayor. I did have a, a good conversation with the director and he has talked to the company, which was our biggest concern. The company is willing to sit down and work with them so they're not draining all their funds to pay for this project. They are going to extend the payments out, which was my main concern, so I was satisfied with that. So I'm good with this now.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the general public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Item 13, public comment for non-agenda items. Give three minutes and it's not a time to go back and forth with council. Anybody from the public have a comment? Mr. Hunt.
At the last council meeting during a council member discussion, there was an idea thrown out that we should extend hours for the building department because it inconveniences people to have to stay home for them to come out for inspection. There's not a city in this metro area that does not do eight to five, nine to five. You only get a morning or an afternoon. It's the way it works. We extended, well, go with this, you call a cable company up or your internet's down, call them and they're going to tell you, we'll be out sometime that day. You'll get a morning or an afternoon from the building department. If you change the hours to run the guys at whatever's convenient for homeowner, you can have inspectors out till 10 o'clock at night, trying to inspect a roof, trying to inspect a rough building in the dark. You got an awful lot of time out there where five, six o'clock at night is dark out already. It's not going to work. You're going to extend an awful lot of wages out, a lot of overtime out just to make it convenient for somebody and we're going to be paying more taxes for it. Nobody out there is doing it. There's no reason for it to even come up before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Kim Poma with the Garden City Public Library. We are in the midst of our summer reading. Things are going very well. I do want to announce that on Saturday, July 29th, we are having our End of Summer Reading Bash from 1:00 to 4:00. We're going to have a lot of stuff for the kids. We're going to have a bounce house. We're going to have face painting. to have face painting. We're going to have hopefully a classic car show in vendors. I'm asking anybody at home who knows anyone with classic cars, or has one they want to bring up, or anyone who's interested in doing a vendor spot. It is a $10 donation to the building fund for that, but they're set up from 1:00 to 4:00. And classic car show, we will be doing voting for the best one. If you do have any, if anyone's interested, they can contact the library, or they can email me at psmpauloma@gardencitylib.org. And if they do call the library, tell them to ask for Kim. Thank you very much.
Kim, what was that date again?
Saturday, July 29th. The last Saturday of the month.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No further comments? Okay, city managers' report.
All right, Mayor, I want to just go over, spend a couple minutes going over two different topics that I was asked to, to discuss. One was the, the library lawsuit settlement. Never was made public on, you know, what happened. So I have composed a detailed report. Just final touches on that. I'll send that out to the council tomorrow with more details, but tonight, I'll just give a quick recap. A year and a half after filing the lawsuit, the final installment had about five major parts, as well as some additional connected outcomes. So number one, first of all, the library will reimburse the city $65,000 for past bills. $65,000 is $5,000 less than what the city asked for two years ago in the spring of 2021 and long before a lot of attorney bills. Number two, it is the library's responsibility to obtain and pay for retiree healthcare benefits for one of their, their one library retiree. The city stated all along that the city was not responsible for the library retiree, but as requested by the library, if the library ceases to exist 10 years from now, meaning the library doesn't receive the support of the vote of the residents, and the library closes down, the employee is still living, the city will provide the cost of healthcare for the one library employee. That was an extra caveat that we put in, that we will take it on if this person still needs healthcare in the end, but it is the library's responsibility. Agreement three was that the city would authorize the library to obtain a credit card for their own bank account. According to Michigan state law, libraries are, are mandated to receive city's permission to receive a credit card. Number four, the library may request a tax mileage dispersment from the city only once per month. Now, when the city collects tax money for the county, the school district, the museums, and others, the city usually gives them all their money immediately. The library wants the city to hold their money, but can only ask for one check a month. Of course, if they wanted to, and I recommend it, the city, or the library could take all their money at one time, like everybody else. And then number five of the settlement was the city will hold the library building fund money in the city bank account until the library chooses to build a new library. So until the library decides to start building a new library one day, the city will keep the $5 million-plus dollars in the city bank, you know, as it continues to increase. So in short, regarding the two main issues of past unpaid bills and retiree healthcare, the library lawsuit ended with the city being reimbursed the $65,000 in past bills, and the library is responsible for their retiree healthcare. There are seven other additional issues not included in the lawsuit that came about that have been resolved, including, number one, there was a lot of questions to this. The, it is officially acknowledged the library is not a department of the city. It is an outside organization. So that was something that, right from the start, was an issue. Two, no, a new rental agreement was signed by the library with one said inclusive rental fee instead of different contracts and many rental costs. So we have it now down to a science of one fee, straight rental with the library. Three, the city canceled the fiscal agency agreement it had with the library. Four, the city also canceled the library employee retiree healthcare costs that were incorrectly charged to the city. Five, the city also moved library employees out of the city's pension fund division into their own division and closed the division to future library employees, thereby reducing the city's liability in the future. This actually was, was a very good decision overall because it actually ensured that the library's pension will be fully funded within 10 years. So if there is any close down of the library, the city is not responsible for any pension funds. They will be fully funded, so any employees retiring from the library would be pleased with that, that decision. Six, the city also removed unnecessary library ordinances from the city's code of ordinances. And seventh, the city removed liability from any confusion as to the relationship between the city and the library. The library is now recognized as a rental group and not intertwined with the city's administration, and any future responsibility should the library find itself in a future lawsuit has nothing to do with the city. So in the end, the city was correct in its assessment of the situation from the start. Unfortunately, it took two years for the case to end with the library accepting almost the exact same offer that the city offered to them two years ago. So as I said, I put a more detailed report together that'll be sent out to the, the council sometime tomorrow, but at least that's, you know, first time publicly announcing what the settlement was, and that is public information. So it wasn't something, something extra. And I also wanted to mention, like, Meals on Wheels, really quick about that. So Meals on Wheels is Wayne County program. It's managed by Wayne County employees and volunteers. The program actually has 80 meals on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. They deliver to homes throughout the area. Of the 80 meals, 30 of them go to residents in Westland. Apparently, a few years ago, Westland shut their facility down and, and joined up with Garden City. So 30 of them are over with us. The activity is a delivery program, so whereby a location used, bulk food is delivered to it, it's placed out, and then it's all delivered out of that facility to people's homes. Churches tend to house these kind of facilities, and Mayor and I are meeting with the, you know, the department director this next week, and one of the things he talked about was finding more volunteers to help with this program. And we discussed, usually a church is where these things are set up, because now you've got more parishioners that may receive the food, but also you've got a lot more volunteers that may be interested in helping deliver. So since the city has been able to rent out the space at Maplewood Center, the center is, is gone from being a negative cost to the city to being a positive revenue generator. Now that the city's able to rent out the final wing for a lot more youth programs and a revenue of $45,000 more per year, it did make sense for staff to find a new location for Meals on Wheels program to distribute their food. Before calling Wayne County to discuss the change, city staff toured numerous locations to find the most accommodating place to move the Meals on Wheels program. After speaking with county representatives, the city was told right now, they're looking in other cities, four locations, looking for new places they've been moved out from. Garden City was the only one that actually went out of their way to help try to find them a place to actually move to, unlike the others. The First United Methodist Church, only a block east of Maplewood Center, could be, couldn't be more pleasant, the people themselves, and accepting the Meals on Wheels program. Even more, to reduce the activities at the church, the city asked Wayne County to move the liquid nutrition program over to the city's food bank, food pantry. So unlike the Meals on Wheels program, which is, you know, three meals a week, the nutrition, liquid nutrition ensure program, it's an entirely different group of 70 people than the 50 from the food, and they drive to the location once a month, pick up boxes, and then they go head home. And that certainly seems to be more of a program that's designed for food pantry activity rather than at the church. So the county was very pleased, of course, to hear that we're willing to take that part on at the food pantry. So as an update, though, the group was moved on Thursday. Today was their first day over at the church. We sent staff all over throughout the day to check. There were no incidents, no issues whatsoever. The Meals on Wheels program now has a location that they can send deliveries out from. The city can have more programming at Maplewood Center, as well as collect an additional $45,000 in rent to go to future maintenance. And it seems that all programs are settled where they can be settled at to the best opportunity that we can put out there. So that's just a quick follow-up on Meals on Wheels. And as last thing, just prayers with Tim Gibbons and his family. I spoke to him just before the meeting. Tim, for those that, that know him, of course, would recognize, and those that don't know him, Tim is just an old soul. It's like he just, he's, it's like he's been in your life forever when you meet Tim. So he's, he's a wonderful guy. He did his best to keep his composure, talking to me earlier today and, and going through, through some troubled times. I was at Divine Child this morning. They had a mass for Owen, and had to be 600, 700 people. The church was packed with a lot of Divine Child, the kids, classmates, and the teams were out there. And, and he didn't tell anybody. I didn't know Liam was at the mass this morning, and they wanted to kind of just have him blend in with the kids. So Tim's other son, the younger brother, is, is back home, and so is Maeve. She had a dance class today, so they're trying to get some normal time for the kids. So it's, it's a heartbreaking incident, but, but Tim and his family are wonderful and will be there. And the city is putting plans together for some activities and things, and everybody will know about it, and it's, it's going to be a long road. So God bless the Gibbons family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Earl had, had somewhere he had to go. He did want to say congratulations to all the retirees and new, new chief and new captain. Councilmember Carefodus.
I just have a couple of quick things. One, where are we with the master plan? Has the planning commission?
Planning commission stepped for the master plan? Are they reviewing it at this point? Do you know?
They still are reviewing.
Offhand.
Part of that is in the five years to do a review and then make recommendations of addition, additional changes or a complete revision.
That's what I'm asking. Have they started that at their meetings, or?
It's not on this agenda.
Nothing's been started yet, then?
Correct. They had one review letter, I think, three months ago, and they were looking at that, so.
And then I had a lot of people that were commenting the last couple of weeks about playground stuff. And I know last year, we got that grant for City Park, for all the stuff. When is that going to happen?
Currently going on right now, I was on the phone with Hennessy the other day. Apparently, the state needed some additional changes made. The claim is that they made them. I believe our Parks and Recreation Director has been in contact with the state program. She's worked with them before. So at this point, it's just waiting for the go. I asked to bid out the equipment. They said the state says you cannot bid out anything until they get the final say, which makes no sense to me, again, of, we can just tweak the bid if we needed to, so.
And this is for new play equipment at Garden City Park, a new playground, right?
This is, yes.
Other stuff's going to go, and we're going to get new stuff.
Yes. And that, there are, you know, some changes to the entire pattern there, that we're, we're going to make some, it's going to be a beautiful destination playground, yes. Fully handicap accessible, also ADA compliant.
Do we anticipate that happening this year?
As soon as we get, we got the okay, you're looking at...
And also the...
The equipment also, I think, is an issue that we've been hearing a lot about, is the COVID still has destroyed the supply chain. So I, I would say for sure, if, because of winter time in Michigan, probably by spring, we should be installing a brand-new installation.
And then one more question, one more thing. I know before I mentioned it about the grant that we applied for, for Helen Park. Did we ever find anything out about that? Because we did apply for a grant for that, so I didn't know whether we were denied, or we just...
I'm not sure if the Parks and Rec was, I'll get back to the council. I'll report back to the council on that one.
Okay. And then I also wanted to say about, this Saturday is the Garden City Garden Walk. It's from 10:00 to 3:00. You can get your tickets at Barson's. It includes lunch, and you can come to the vendor show for the garden club. You can come to the Garden City bouquet contest, which now has a section for kids under 16. They can enter the contest. And then for adults, and then all the proceeds go to a $1,000 scholarship for a Garden City High School student. That's what the garden club does with those funds that we raise.
Thank you. Councilmember Squares.
Yes, just congratulations to Kathy Harmon and Martha Griggs on their retirement, and to our new fire chief, Randy Keen, and Captain Dan Nault. Congratulations, and I know you'll do a great job. And that's about all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protondole.
Just going to say it again, congratulations to Kathy. We're going to miss her a lot.
A lot.
But I'm sure that our new fire chief, Keen, will do his best to fill those shoes. So, and congratulate, sorry, congratulations to Martha Griggs and also Captain Dan. And just let the Gibbons family know that my, my heart cries for them. It really does. And we pray that everything will somehow work out to be okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynch.
I too wanted to send my congratulations on both retirements for both Chief Kathy and for Martha Griggs. Martha does a lot of stuff behind the scenes. Kathy does a lot of stuff in front of the scenes, and they're both very integral to the city of Garden City. And congratulations to Captain Dan Nault. I've known him for a long time, and he's, he's now the captain. That's great news. And Chief Randy Keen, he'll do an outstanding job. And to the Gibbons family, I'm very close with, part of the Gibbons family, I worked with Brenda, and I know Tim, and young Tim was only in eighth grade when I started working over at St. Rayfield School. And our hearts just go out to that family. Anything that we can do, they know that all they have to do is ask, and any one of us will help them out in any way we can. So prayers for them, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Whit.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My thoughts and prayers with the Gibbons family as well. Hopefully, everything can go smooth. A congratulations on all of our recognition tonight, the two retirements and the two swearing-ins. Good luck in retirement to the two retirements, and welcome into our new swearing-ins. And we hope you guys do a wonderful job and keep the city moving forward. And then Wednesday, July 19th, is Movies in the Park. It will be on the north side of the parking lot by the baseball fields. It is Matilda, and the show starts at dusk. The Garden City Hockey Association will be doing a fundraiser with the snacks. And then King Cone will be donating free ice cream again. I'm going to be helping pass out as well. So I will be there, come up, say hi, get some free ice cream, donate to the Garden City Hockey Association, and watch a great movie. That's all.
Okay. You said that that is at City Park, right?
Yeah, City Park.
Next to the ball field.
Yep, to the north side of the parking lot where the four ball diamonds are, or five.
At City Park, okay.
By the big green barn.
Look for the blow-up screen.
Yeah.
Dead giveaway. Mr. Miller.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. I just going to repeat a lot. Congratulations to everybody and to the Gibbons family. Thoughts and prayers. And no further business. This meeting is adjourned.